All right, we're coming back out of recess. Tom had just sent out the document related to our external contributions. If, Tom, you wanted to maybe give some, maybe we can go sheet by sheet, starting with public safety, going into the training center, as we call it, conservation and development, and then the culture and recreation. And if you, if you also would let us know if these monies have gone out yet, that would, I think, be important as well. So we can start with, so we can start.
Yeah, the, the public safety, the is primarily made up of the, the four, the three fire companies and the Belfont Emergency Medical. Those checks have already gone out. There's $25,000 to the firearms site, which nothing has been dispersed. And in the scholarship for EMS volunteers for $10,800. Not sure that anything has been dispersed for that at this point.
Yeah, Tom, we have dispersed a few hundred dollars, I think, for EMS scholarships. I'm willing to discuss temporary one-year reduction in that number if needed.
So Molly Kunkel just sent a letter, she sent it a few weeks ago, I just saw it yesterday, asking for payment for those scholarships. So we've not paid anything out to them in this calendar year, right, Tom?
Correct, correct.
And is that for, Margaret, is that for the scholarships from 2019 or for this year's that we were planning on giving out?
I believe it's for this year.
Okay.
We paid everything that's been given and awarded out, correct, Tom?
Yeah, so the, the award amount that was awarded out in 18, we dispersed the whole full amount. And I think to Mark's point, not all of it was spent. So there were some, you know, several hundred dollars left over and some of those monies have been spent. This amount that you see in here was for the full amount for 20. So again, I misspoke, I said 18, but I meant 19. So the money for the 19 amount was fully dispersed and they had that. But again, we would have, to Margaret's point, gotten something to trigger that payment. We didn't get anything yet till now.
So Mark, are you suggesting having that be zero for this year? And then in 2021, reexamining it?
What, whoops. Oh, I, I think it needs to be a little more than zero. I can work with the director of the Public Safety Training Center, because some of that funding was going to South Hills CPI and the phlebotomy program at Center Lifelink. But a smaller portion of it was used to encourage very low-income people to be volunteers for EMS services. I, I think that portion is still quite critical. Because obviously, at this point, we need as many volunteers for EMS as we can get. But if you want to, you know, look at a rough number, I mean, wait, maybe we could reduce that for the current year only by maybe eight grand or something. I think 2,800 would probably, again, I can check with Mark Keller, but I think between the funds that are in there, plus another 2,800 should cover expectations for the EMS scholarship portion.
Okay, so the suggestion would be to reduce it by 8,000. Are you okay with that, Steve?
Yes, that's fine. And I would also take the $10,000 out for the firearms site right now.
It looks like that total, Steve, is 25,000. Do you want to leave, did you say you want to leave some in there?
How much do we put in the budget for this year?
25,000 for the firearms.
I think we should take it all out.
Okay, okay, all right. Mark, are you okay with that?
Well, I, is there any possibility that something might get kicked off by the end of the year, Steve? And we want to leave at least a little bit of cash in there?
If you want to leave 10 in there in case we have to do some grading or something. But as far as the actual project itself, I don't see it happening, given the current circumstances.
Yeah, I, I think we're, we're taking it all out. And then if there's, if there's any work done, I'm willing to reexamine it. But I think we should take it out, just, just because that's the most likely scenario that will occur. But we should, yeah.
All right, sure. So if, if, if there is a chance that that project could move forward, because it's a good project, I'd be fine trying to find some extra funding to, you know, let them move forward. All right.
All right.
Okay, sounds good. All right, then going into the public safety training, Tom, that next tab.
Yeah, so there was a hundred thousand dollars set aside for the CPI for the training site and then 10,000 for the Fire Chiefs Association. 50,000 has been dispersed for the safety training site. And then the 10 grand was sent to the Fire Chiefs Association. So typically what would happen, the remaining 50 grand would get sent in the second half of the year. Typically, Mark Keller would send some type of communication. So there's 50 grand left there that has not been sent out of the 100 in and of the 10.
Okay, Mark, in terms of the, the advisory board, any updates there on the site? We know that the training has halted for the last several weeks. But in terms of the future of the site for this year, any, any thoughts?
Yes, well, the training may be temporarily halted. The director of Fire Chiefs EMS staff are looking at ways to start training up roughly the ninth of May and to do it in a socially-distanced fashion. There is discussion that in the short term, we may limit use of the training site to Center County emergency responding groups and first-do groups from immediately adjacent counties. It's one of the last remaining training sites in the central part of the state. So the usage from counties a little further out was beginning to grow. And that was adding some very helpful fee revenue. But I think, at least in the short term, they're going to concentrate on Center County and immediately adjacent areas.
Would that mean that any portion of that 100,000 could be reduced? Or is that basically fixed cost for Mark Keller and props and maintenance of the facility?
It's, it's fixed cost for Mark Keller, for props, for maintenance, for contracts. And I believe it may pay for a portion of his administrative person. I think he's been paying for a lot of the administrative person by the various fees for all the many different programs he, he runs in addition to the core part of the training center.
Okay, so we're.
I think we.
Go ahead, Steve.
I think we should leave that funding stream alone.
I would agree. Okay, Mark, you're good there?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, the 10,000 for the Fire Chiefs for their training, to pay bucks, though. I, I, my understanding is that we have not sent that check, is that correct?
No, we did send it.
All right, all right, okay.
Because that was the one that we, that you were going to give to them at their meeting. And then the meeting got canceled and we decided to just mail it out instead. We had talked about that.
Okay, my thinking would be that as we go into 2021, we would look at maybe not doing that. Because my understanding is that they had a little bit of a reserve from, from 2019, a few thousand, not much. And that they, they may not be doing as many trainings this year. So my thinking would be, obviously, they have the money, so we can't, we can't ask for it back. We could, but I don't think that'll go well. And I would say for 2021, we, we, we keep that in mind as probably not doing that at all. So, but it looks like since that's been, that's been mailed already, we're, that, that is what it is. Any other thoughts on that?
I don't think we can ask for it back.
Right, agree.
I think next, we have to have a different conversation, depending on how our overall budget looks.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, I, I agree with Steve, can't ask for it back. And between what our 2021 budget looks like, and perhaps if they only ended up spending a portion of it due to reduction in training, perhaps they can make a portion of that last into 2021.
Okay, all right, so a larger chunk is going to be this, we call it conservation and development. It's more about that economic piece. And then, so we can go through that, Tom, if you'd like to do that.
Yeah, so again, these are broken down into several different categories. We have the Center Region Planning Commission, it's 134 grand. We have paid out to that so far, $33,500. Center Region MPO, 33, 857. Again, I believe we made a quarterly payment to them. CBI CC, 100 grand, we've made a quarterly payment to them also. Mo Shannon Valley Economic Development Partnership was $7,500. And we've paid, we've paid that full 7,500. The Cedar cog, 39, 498, and I believe that's quarterly payment. The Belfon Inter Valley Chamber request for $7,500, that was paid in full. The Spring Board and the Phillipsburg at 28,600, or 6,000, I'm sorry. There, there has been some expenses that have been reimbursed throughout the year on that. Yeah, Appalachian Food Works requests $10,000, and that, that check has been sent for the 10 grand. Phillipsburg Revitalization Corporation was 7,500, and that was sent out. Same thing with the Mobile Ag Lab, 4 to 2,500, that was sent out. And then the Downtown Belfont Incorporated requests 5 grand, that was sent out. Now, these, again, the larger ones, they're quarterly payments. And so we've, we've made those payments. As far as the CBI CC, we have auto-pay list for that. And so I've instructed Julie just to not do anything with that at this point. And then we can go down through the other ones and kind of talk about them.
Okay, sounds good, Tom. Let's start with the big fish here. In terms of the CBI CC, I think it would, I, I serve on their board and I would be comfortable explaining to them that we're going to be either, I'm, I'm, I'm between taking it to 50,000, so cutting them half, or if we would be, if we would take it to, to, we would basically say, we're not going to pay you anything until we get more of an understanding from what's happening, the state or federal government. I think either way, we could communicate to them that we're, we're, it's not going to be any more than 50,000 this year. But it really is between 25, do we, we already gave them 25, we can't ask for that back. But do we do another 25? Or do we just say, we're not even sure that we can do that? So that's, that's where I'm at on, but I don't think we should be giving them 100,000 this year just because of the reduction in economic development that's going to be occurring. And in addition, there are some other deals they're working on that will allow them to have some, some cash flow. But we also don't want to have all the other community stakeholders that pay, that, that contribute to them also reduce heavily. But I think a 50% is, is well within their means to be able to take that.
I think that's a reasonable, a reasonable way to go with this. Given our, you know, our current financial situation and what we know is coming in, in July.
Yeah, I, I don't necessarily want to be cutting economic development funding during possibly the worst economic downturn in our lifetimes. I think maybe we should reallocate some of these funds to possibly come up with some ways to aid small businesses. I agree with Mike that a big portion of our contribution to the CBI CC was to help fund a, I believe, a full-time economic development, economic retention, economic recruitment-type position. I just don't think there's a whole lot of economic recruitment going to be happening here in the near future.
And I'm willing to have the conversation on reallocating some funds when we come to Spring Board and Phillipsburg Incubator. But I think on the chamber, that $50,000 right off the top could be used to, for other expenditures we have. But again, I'm, I'm comfortable communicating that at the next board meeting, letting everybody know why, why that's happening and the kind of reductions we're seeing. But what I can say is, I can say, we're going to, the 25,000 has already been sent over. However, the other 25,000, we're going to be keeping. And there's a chance that throughout the year, that might not, that we would not be sending that due to our financial situation. But we would be keeping in, in touch and letting them know what that looks like. So if there's agreement on that, we can move then into Spring Board and Phillipsburg Incubator. Mark, if you wanted to give us an update on where those are at and talk about what, what, you know, what, what it looks like for them.
Sure, so with Spring Board, they, we were helping in a three-to-four-way split to fund rent and utilities for the Studio 1795 location. But unfortunately, for the Studio 1795 location, they were counting on some rental fees for a broad variety of events, including things like weddings and bridal showers, et cetera. And obviously, that's probably not going to be happening here in the near future. So the owner of Studio 1795 has said that she is going to be closing that physical space in the near future. Spring Board can still continue. We can probably make arrangements to rent rooms or space at local restaurants or possibly at another entrepreneurial company. So I think Spring Board can pivot. But that would potentially reduce costs for renting the space and for the utilities and any possible leasing for printers and things of that nature. I can double-check with Ellen Mattis on that. But obviously, I'm sure she's on the hook still for April. But if she can get out of her leases on 30 to 60 days' notice, potentially, we're looking at maybe half the year where there's no rental costs and no utility costs. So that would be thousands right there.
So where would that, where would that, so what would that mean then in terms of those costs?
Well, if she terminates her lease and cancels all the utilities, I think between the, I could pull it up here to have a budget. Proposed 2020 budget for them. There it is, okay. 2020. Okay, the rent was running 300 per month. And the utilities were running about 200 a month. So that'd be 500 even a month for at least six months. So there's already three grand there.
But in terms of, and in terms of what they're doing, Mark, in terms of starting new businesses and helping new businesses up, they're most likely won't be businesses that are, so in terms of what they do, they don't necessarily focus on assisting current businesses. They're more focused on helping businesses start and grow.
Well, they, they have expanded what they've been doing, especially recently. They have been helping a lot of existing entrepreneurial companies connect with resources like connecting them with the local banks, connecting with the state and federal loan programs, sponsoring joint seminars with the SBDC. They have kind of expanded what they've been offering. And a lot of it is to just help keep existing businesses running and, you know, helping them transition to a more virtual environment with websites and e-commerce pages.
Well, if, if there, I mean, in terms of, you know, 20,000 is a large chunk. And if we're looking at 15,000, that we could then shift into another way to help businesses, what would be, what would be the, I'm just trying to get, I'm just trying to see how much we can reduce them, because I think we need to, but.
Well, I think, I think if, if the cut was aimed at some sort of small business assistance, especially in the greater Belfont area, I think that would probably be taken a little bit better. You know, so they can say, well, we had been doing this, we'll now have it be handled through the Small Business Assistance Fund that we might put together. So I'm not thrilled, about a $15,000 cut. Maybe something more like 10 would be better. But yeah, if that money goes towards helping small businesses throughout Center County, especially greater Belfont, I can work with that.
Mark, I, I'm going to be blunt here. I think we need to act this whole thing. There's, there's hundreds of billions of dollars being divvied out. The small businesses in trouble right now. I know that you're very passionate about this. But with the closing of 1795, it's very difficult to justify the expenditure right now. And we just laid off 100 people. I, I think we need to look inside Center County government first right now. That's, that's my thought.
Well, Steve, the problem is that the federal money isn't reaching our local small businesses. As you know, the big banks shuffled the decks. And very much of the first batch of the PPP money went to extremely large corporations. At this point, the state program, in the first $10 million, not a single Center County company received that assistance. And in terms of the PPP program, our two main application companies for that were the MVEDP and Cedar cog. And from what I'm hearing, they had, both organizations had a lot of applications in process, because a lot of these small businesses, you know, just didn't have all this information at their fingertips. And so they got shut out of the, the first round of the PPP. So unfortunately, I think a lot of our small businesses in Center County aren't getting loans, aren't receiving services. They're pretty much adrift at this point.
What's the status of this latest proposal that's working its way through the House of Representatives right now?
Well, I'm, I'm hearing it's going to be in the ballpark of 300, another 300 billion. But I haven't heard anything about rules that will force banks to stop shuffling the deck and putting the multimillion-dollar applications first. I haven't heard about any rules that are going to say that large corporations like Ruth Chris Steakhouse, which received $20 million of funding, isn't allowed to come back to the well again and get another $20 million of funding. I haven't heard of any changes in the rules.
All I'm thinking is the optic of, of us giving money away to, to small businesses while we're literally, you know, trying to, you know, save dimes and pennies to run the services that we're responsible for. I think it's very dangerous right now.
Well, I, I think we need to be supporting our small businesses, Steve, because their occupancy of commercial structures, which brings us almost $1 billion of property tax valuation. That's why those buildings have value. If there's no small businesses occupying them, we're going to see a whole lot of appeals. Because the property owner will say, well, I, I can't get any small businesses to occupy my commercial building, so it's worth a heck of a lot less money.
Look, the, the, the small amount of money we're going to be adding to that conversation, I think dwarfs the conversation we need to be having, which is keeping tax, trying to keep our tax rates low. So right now, that, that's where I'm at.
Yeah, I think with, with us, the one thing that we did that I think to both Mark and Steve that really helped our small businesses was to move the tax face value from June 30th to September 30th. That gives them a little bit more breathing room and a potential to maybe move it back even further. Again, it gives them more breathing room, gives them more liquidity right now. There was a time and a place, and I think for five years, we've been, or four years, Mark, we've been supportive of Spring Board and helped them to succeed and grow. And there's been a lot of resources put in there. But I think that there, and, and reading through Ellen's article and her comments there and also on social media, I think that she's made some points about how it's not the right time for this. If she's going to scale down and scale back, I think I'd be comfortable with 10,000, keeping her working and operating and whatever she can do with that, if it's for a few months. You know, that's, that's fine. But I think we do need to look at reallocating some of the money towards other parts of money, whether it's Cedar cog, helping them augment their, their fund there. But I, I don't think it's, I think in this environment where that's, that organization is more of a growth organization, it's not necessarily a rescue organization. I see SBDC and other groups as well that are able to help people. So I'm comfortable with 10. And, you know, if, if you or Steve are willing to take the remainder of that, those funds and move them into a Cedar cog pool, I don't know what Phillipsburg is looking like, if they've, where they're at. But the total amount that we have for those is 34,000. So if we, I don't, I don't, again, you can speak to Phillipsburg. But I think I'm at 10, I'm comfortable doing 10,000 to Spring Board for the, for, for this year. And then looking to take the remainder of that money and augment it with Cedar cog funding.
Well, with the, the Phillipsburg incubator, we have two tenants there now. I can probably take the longest-term tenant and, and say, look, we've helped support you here for a couple of years. But, you know, times are tough. We need to cut what we've been sending to you. And so I think that would probably free up, since part of the year is already gone, I think that might free up about three grand. So if we can take the funding that we're cutting from small business support in Phillipsburg and Belfont and try to allocate that towards some sort of different small business support, be that through Cedar cog or some other program. Now, we'll, we'll, you know, we'll do what we have to do there.
So essentially, that would be.
Gentlemen, I respectfully have to disagree. I'm for cutting, I'm for cutting it to the bone. That Spring Board doesn't exist anymore. The, the space is gone, the other space is gone. I think we need to, we need to look inside county government right now. And I cannot support any allocation of funds for anything other than the application of day-to-day expenses for Center County government. And that's pretty much where I'm at. And I'm, I'm not going to change my mind.
I, I understand that, Steve. Understand that. So, and again, this, this is a little bit of a compromise here. I think we're, we're trying to work towards where, instead of being 34,000 spent for Phillipsburg and Belfont, it'd be reallocating those funds to have a 10,000 contribution to Spring Board or seven, you know, I guess it's, so Mark, who would it be going to? Because I think that's important.
You've already contributed over 6,000 to Spring Board. I have no problem seeing through our commitment to Phillipsburg. But Spring Board is dead, as far as I'm concerned, for this year. And I'm, I'm not even going to discuss any, any, any compromise there. Now, I'm, I'm not even gonna discuss any, any, any compromise there.
Okay, that's fair. So, Mark, if there was a contribution that would be going, who would it be going to?
Um, oh, you're talking, well, again, what we're, first of all, both organizations have been operating now for four months. So if we cut the Springboard from twenty-eight down to eighteen, that leaves them ten. Some large fraction of that ten has already been spent. And roughly the same with the Phillipsburg Incubator. They were at six, we're cutting them to three. Some pretty decent fraction of that three grand has already, you know, been spent. I mean, Tom was saying we've already sent partial money to them already. These are actually some pretty significant cuts.
Right, so if, it would seem like the, the funding we would give, that under this proposal, it would be, Springboard would be getting about half the year of funding, about ten, so ten, if they spent six, they could, it would be until June that they would, they would get their funding. But, but again, what, what, who would the money, if Seventy-Ninety-Five is closed, it's not open. And Springboard, you know, that, that, I know it's, I know what you're saying, Steve, that it's, it's closed, but they, they closed back in, you know, earlier in the year when Ellen transitioned into Seventy-Ninety-Five. So who would actually be getting the, the funds at this point, Mark?
So with the remaining funds, we need a, a meeting, probably virtually, of the Advisory Board because we still have programming for, let's see, management fees to make all the arrangements and provide services. We have marketing, we have the startup challenge, which we might change what we're looking at at this point, also because we had been allocating five grand in the past to that, helped a number of local businesses grow. I don't even think there's five grand left in the total budget. So we could still do that challenge, maybe move the focus of it a little bit toward helping existing businesses with things like websites and e-commerce. So yeah, there would be a few thousand left for program and a very, a reduced startup challenge. That, that's probably what the money would be for, but I need to have a meeting of the Advisory Board and have them discuss what they would want to do.
Okay, well, I think.
We laid off one hundred people.
Right, right. Right, furloughs, sixty, twenty, partial, and then twenty vacancies, yes. Yep, so.
And I wanted to say, I, I looked at the, I looked at the Belfont, the incubator, and based on what we've contributed over the past years and then what we just, the allocation of the twenty-eight grand, there's twenty-three-thousand-seven-hundred dollars left.
So does that mean we spent about?
Well, again, there were carryovers from prior year, you know, there were certain allocations in fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen. And the way it was done before even I came on board was there was a spreadsheet to track those expenses. And Julie would keep track of those, so there's, like I said, I think probably been six grand in expenditure so far through, through March. But based on the, the funds available, based on that twenty-eight thousand that was funded, there's twenty-three-seven left over, so whatever the reduction would be, we'd reduce that amount left to spend. I'm just trying to give some perspective.
All right, so very roughly, we've spent forty-three-hundred of twenty-twenty money on the bills that have come in so far. There's probably a few more that Ellen is obligated for that either haven't happened yet, so she hadn't sent them to us, or she maybe just sent it to Julie and it might not be up in your spreadsheet yet.
Right.
Okay.
So, so hearing a little bit of this, I think where I'd be at is taking, so pausing any funding to Springboard, additional funding. And we would wait, Mark, if you want to have that meeting with them, the special meeting with the Advisory Board, so you can get a better sense of it. But you'd have to come back to us to, and I know Steve's basically a no on this, so I appreciate that, so. But we, we would want to discuss it as a group, so we all understand what's happening. And at, at a future budget meeting, we can do that. And we can then look at what their allocations would be. But I'm in favor of just, you know, saying to Ellen, we're pausing the funding, there's no more funding this year. And if there's bills, but I'm also sensitive to this, if there's a few hundred dollars that she has to pay for bills or whatnot that have already been expenses, we don't want to leave her in the lurch. But she would have to get that over to us ASAP, but so let, let's do that, so that's where I'm at on that. So i- i- if Steve, you're not, if you're not willing to say that, we're sort of in a, in a, a bind here. If, if you're not comfortable with that, but essentially, I think that would be closer to where you're coming from. We can't ask her for the money back, the forty-three-hundred or forty-six-hundred that we, she's already spent. You know, we can't.
I'm not, I'm not asking for any, any refund of, of money spent. I, I just think there needs to be a very limited discussion about whatever outstanding bills are out there. And that's about as far as I'm willing to go.
Right, and so that's, that's what I'm suggesting, which is we're saying, you're not gonna get any more money unless it's highly justified and you have to submit that, and we're only gonna be paying for expenditures that she's, that she's, you know, committed to, you know, obligated to, you know, through, through this, this week. But after that, we're just gonna, you know, end the funding and, and go from there. But that's on the Springboard side. There could be a conversation about, and my suggestion would be, if Cedar cog, once Cedar cog gets applications, once they see where they're at, there could be a conversation about taking some of the funds that we had for CBI CC or for Springboard and Phillipsburg Incubator and, and making that available to some of those businesses. And again, that's a loan, it's not a grant, so that would be a loan. And there could even be a conversation about bringing that money back to Center County once it's repaid and, and, you know, however long that, if it's thirty-six months or however long it is. But I'd be willing to have that conversation. We want to help small businesses, Mark, but I, I do think that we do need to be looking more internally, we need, we need to be focused on that, but if there are ways that we can be helpful, there can be an ask or a request.
Well, you, you do raise the good point there, Mike. If we reallocate some of these funds to loans to help keep our small businesses open, it is a loan. And so I think there's a six-month pause, and then there's a three-year amortization, and then a small balloon at the end. So yeah, that money would, hopefully, all of it come back to the county over about a forty-two-month period.
Right, so as, so my suggestion would be, as we see the Cedar cog fund get requests from, set from all the counties, if there's more, if Center County businesses are, say, are, that qualify for it or being told, no, you can't, you can't get it because we don't have enough money, if you want to come back and let us know that, I think that might be an appropriate time, because it's basically what the PPP is doing. PPP, a few, you know, several weeks ago said, we've got hundreds of billions that we would like to give out. It exhausted it, that, that they just passed a second round. So it'd almost be the same sort of concept on a, on a micro level, so. So that, that'd be my suggestion with that, but again, we can have further conversations. So are we in rough agreement with that?
Well, I don't know if I'd use the term agreement. It, it appears, you know, that I am outvoted on the Springboard funding. For the incubator funding, were we talking about a three-thousand-dollar cut? Or were we talking about basically kicking out both of the tenants?
I think it was a suggested three thousand, so they, there could be some wiggle room to help them out. It's not as large of a, of a fund, but I, I don't know if, again, that, that's, that's a smaller fund. I don't think that we're too worried about that one. Steve, did you have thoughts on that? Kick them out, give them some time?
No, no, I, I, I think we have a responsibility, if it's still a functioning entity, to give them some timeframe to, you know, continue to operate.
Okay, all right. So, Mark, what would that mean? Would that mean keeping it at six?
We could, or I could talk to the one tenant who's been there a while and say, look, times are tough. If we give you a couple more months and then maybe cut you off in July, I could have that conversation with him.
Okay, that sounds good, and you can let us know.
I would give you the, the, you know, determine whatever you think is practical.
Again, there, times are tough, I'm, I'm willing to have the conversation with the longest-term tenant and say, hey, if, if we were to do whatever it is, but by July, it's either reduced or no substance to you, I'm willing to have that conversation with him.
Okay, so we wouldn't change that amount right now, we'd keep it at six and go from there. Okay, all right, I'm gonna, we've gone on for about forty-five minutes before I've stopped recording, so let me stop the recording.